...by Mr. Tisdale. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote with Mr. Lawrence out of the room? Did you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll go on to the presentation agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Right now, Martha, Susan Hunt's sister Martha Tripp. We're ready to rock and roll with some awards, right?
You can sit down and talk.
Well.
I'm not quite as bossy, but I am bossy. Mayor Gillich, City Council members, my name is Martha Tripp. I am chairperson of the annual Shoebox Martigrou float contest. My mother, Ruth Hunt, loved kids. I've said this every time I come here. This is the 22nd one we've done. It's been around a long time. But she loved children and she wanted them to have an opportunity to be in or part of martigrou and not just catch bees, but be a part of it. So she went into the schools and talked about martigrou and encouraged them to make a shoebox float. And she also wanted them to experience marching in parade, dressing up to the children's marching parade. My sister and I, Susan Hunt, and I will, as long as we live, we will continue to keep our mothers' wishes going. But today, now that it's time for people to recognize the winners of the Shoebox Float Contest. The sponsors of the contest are Biloxi Bay Area Chamber, Biloxi Schools, the City of Biloxi Gulf Coast Carnival Association, and Coastal Mississippi Martigrou Museum, which has just opened up new and if you want to see it on Hough Avenue, very nice place. I want to thank Bill Raymond. He's the City of Biloxi Historic Minister. Thank you, Susan Hunt, for helping me today. After this presentation, the winners will go to the visitor center with their parents, where their floats have been on display for over a week, and they will be honored with king cake and punch or lemonade. I think that's the choice you have to drink today. Before honoring our winners, I do want to recognize some very important people that have helped make this event happen. And they are Ms. Yvonne Gajewski. She is president. Could you raise your hand? She's president of the Biloxi Bay Area Chamber. And of course, Tina is standing right next to her. She's the executive director of the Biloxi Area Bay Chamber. And then we have Mr. Jeff Elder. Can you hold your hand up? He's our captain of the Gulf Coast Carnival Association. And Mr. Kenny Holloway is back there, too? Give him a hand, yeah. He's chairman of the Board of Directors of the Gulf Coast Carnival Association. And then where's Ms. Andy? Andy Ostelit, right over there. She's the president of the Coastal Mississippi Martigrou Museum. And we appreciate them supporting this event. The children in grades four, five, and six in the Biloxi Schools, Nativity, and Arleya Fatima were extended an invitation to participate. And then we had at each school art teachers or teachers that were responsible for making sure that the contest was carried out. So those teachers were, thank you, Ms. Bouvet, Ms. Doninian, Ms. Hoxsey, and she's here, right back there. Thanks, Ms. Hoxsey. Ms. Qualls, Ms. Slosser, Ms. Tally, Ms. Lyons, and Ms. Kavanaugh. So I appreciate all the help that they did at the individual schools. Each overall first-place winner and honorable mention float contest winners will receive today a cash award, money, which they can't wait to wait to get, a certificate here. Then they will get, this is a set of martigrou, 2020 martigrou doubloons. And Ms. Ostelit will hand out two pretty fancy martigrou beads. One from the Gulf Coast Carnival Association and one from the martigrou museum, Mississippi Coastal Museum. And then, at the end, because we know your wonderful children want to give you these things and you hold them, we're giving them a bag. So they can put these in the bag and be able to go home with all their stuff. That was Ms. Hunt's idea. The cash awards are first place, $40, and honorable mention, $10. They also will have an opportunity to participate this Saturday, the 15th, at the children's marching parade. And we are going to ride in a fire truck. So hopefully, parents, you brought those forms that were in their letters. If not, I will have some down at the visitor center. You can sign and give permission for them to come. So we hope that you will come to the parade because it is a lot of fun and we know that you will enjoy the parade very much. Okay, now, we want to get to the actual giving of these awards. So Mayor Gillich is going to stand here, right here, and he's going to give you your certificate. Jeff Elder, you're going to stand right here, and he's going to give out the doubloons. And then Ms. Gajewski, right here, is going to give you your money. And then Ms. Ostelit will give you your beads and the bag. Okay, now hopefully, I don't mispronounce anybody's name, but what's best part of it, this is the first time, every one of them have showed up. Usually we have somebody sick, but we don't. So all of them are here today. And I want to again thank you, all the organizations that helped us with this. Now let's announce the winners of the 22nd Annual Shoebox Float Contest. These are the first-place winners first. We have Allison Udall, who is a fourth-grade student at Donflop Elementary School. Mackenzie Thornton, fourth grade, Nativity BVM. Mia Bayer, fourth grade, North Bay. Lyric James, fourth grade, Pops Ferry. Carly Blake, fifth grade, Biloxi Upper Elementary. Bailey Joy Turant, fifth grade, Nativity BVM. Sophia Bell, sixth grade, Biloxi Upper Elementary. And Amelia Ball, sixth grade, Nativity BVM. Okay, Kenny Holloway, we need you up here. Tina, you got to get up here. And then all you all need to do is stand in. They're going to take a picture. Now y'all squeeze in. Squeeze, 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 squeeze. Go wherever y'all want, just so they can...
Only one boy.
Yeah, you, too.
Bless his heart.
Okay, let me get out of the way. Thank you. I'm still working on you.
Good job, Andy. Thank you.
Jeff, there's a glare back here. Can you do something?
Okay, now, y'all got the, wait, one more thing. All the winners come stand right over here because they want to get you on TV.
Yeah.
And look over there, there's the...
Ben Wright returning, yeah.
Hold your certificate up so they can see you on TV. Now what channel do we need to, what channel?
Axon.
BTV. Parents will be on BTV.
Pretty good hit right now. I don't know how long it lasts. Or getting drunk and getting stupid.
Happy martigrou.
Or...
All right.
What if somebody got pissed off this morning? Got drunk and pissed off this morning? You did good.
Right now, we have honorable mentions. The first one, Aiden Baker, fourth grade, Donflop. Landon Henderson, fourth grade, Jeff Davis. Riley McNeil, fourth grade, Nativity BVM. Cooper Cross, fourth grade, North Bay. Cash Nodgrass, fourth grade, Pops Ferry. Kinsley Moody, fifth grade, Biloxi Upper Elementary. This is her second time to enter. Isabel Byers, fifth grade, Nativity BVM. Lacey Asbill, sixth grade, Biloxi Elementary. And last but not least, this is Ava Stoddard. This is her second time to enter. And last year she was sick, so she wasn't able to come to the city hall. So today she's here. She's a sixth grader, and she's a sixth grader at Nativity. So now stand up and everybody get their picture taken and make it out of the way.
Seriously, Jeff, a little white or silver shoe polish would help us back here. Just saying.
And that's when the crowd panicked.
Hold on.
One, two, three.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any departmental reports? If not, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I think it's a great job. Twenty years ago, my grandson was up there doing the same thing. That's how long it's been going on. That's pretty awesome, you know? They do a good job with some floats.
Is your mic on?
Yeah. Hello? Can you hear?
You're on.
All right. Anyway, that's a great job. Kids enjoyed doing that. I need to go back to a report from last week on that resolution we passed, C. When I got the new report from the council, half of it was scratched out. So I don't know if we did the right thing last week with C anyway. But anyway, I want to make a note that I'm going to tell Lucy, I'm going to vote no on C from last week. That's that short turnaround where you start taking hotel rooms and putting them in condominiums and putting them into apartments. Right. First of all, the Hotel Motel Association, they collect 7% goes to the state. They collect 5% goes to Harrison County Tourism and to pay the debt on the Coliseum. So if we're going to turn all the apartments into motel, then they need to follow the same laws. And I'm going to ask Pete if it's legal to send tax, cities and state tax money to somebody in New York or Airbnb, wherever that, is that actually legal, that we can take our tax money instead of to somebody you know? You never know if you're getting it back. Can we write a law to make sure they have to pay that money directly to the state, the 7% or the 5%?
It's my understanding, Airbnb takes, they take a fee from the person renting. And then they still, they collect the taxes and they remit the taxes, the sales taxes to the state. Different ones do it in a different way. VRBO, I think, relies on the property owner to collect the taxes. Airbnb collects the taxes and remits those taxes to the state.
That's what I find I have with the short-term rentals lately. We got our tax money going elsewhere. And that's not right. That tax money should pay directly to the state. I don't know why A and B, or B wherever they are, has anything to do with the city sale taxes. And that's what you're telling the 7% on that. That money goes, should go directly to the state. And if they all want to be hotels and that, then put them under the guidelines of the Hotel and Motel Association. We have to pay that extra 5% that actually just pays off.
Need to pay all the 12%.
And also supports the Harrison County Tourism Board. That's where that 5% money goes to.
We can make a request to the state to ask them to reconcile that, those taxes to the unit itself. Well, I'd like, first we'll ask them to report what taxes, if they have any record of what taxes are going from the, what are they collecting from Airbnb and how much of that is in the city? That's a good point. They may not be collecting the 5%. Airbnb may not be. I don't know.
And that just helps the county and that pay off a note when they re-done the Coliseum, which is, you know, that money, 2.5%, so my tax goes directly to pay that note down. And you know you get that money back from the state because they're constantly dropping the bill that we owe at the Coliseum. So I mean, I think we should do the same thing with the 7% sales tax. I don't think that money should ever leave the state of Mississippi to me. So I mean, that's, that's the problem I have now with short-term rental because it's not doing the city any good. And we're supposed to vote things here to help the city of Biloxi. And that's not helping the city of Biloxi. That's another way they circumvent the law. So make them pay that directly to the state if we can get that done.
Well, I think what you're asking is how do we reconcile, how do we make sure that that 12% is collected on each rental by property? I think we mentioned last, last week, coming this April, we'll have one year full and all of these people that are already on the books that are registered are going to have to renew. And at that time, I think Jerry and I, we've talked about, we're going to ask for their tax records. Tax return. We're going to see what they're doing. If they don't show they've made any sales tax payments, they're not going to get renewed.
Yeah, but the thing is, Pete, they can say, I paid Airbnb the sales tax, and you can't do anything about them. But you don't know if you ever get the money back in due process. So they can say, I paid it in, you know? So we don't, to me, we need to quit pushing short-term rentals. They don't do the city any good at all.
They're paying their 7% sales tax to the state, and that shit goes into the general sales tax collection. Our, the amount we get back from the state, the diversion, that comes from the, from the state to us, the 18%. So I mean, we've never relied on individual businesses to send us any direct sales tax that goes to the state.
If there's any way we can make it legally, that I rent this apartment for $500, I send my $35 directly to the state, not to somebody in New York, when you can't ever track the money down ever.
We would like to verify that the state is collecting it and the state is giving us our share of it. 18.5, yeah.
If y'all remember, a few years ago, the state started beating up Airbnb, and what they do, Pete, they send them a million-dollar check. All of a sudden, everybody was quiet. So you don't never know how much money Airbnb owes the state of Mississippi. Could be three or four million dollars. Those are the things you got to pay attention to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could I piggyback on that topic? Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. If I understand correctly, Department of Revenue, the sales tax diversion that we receive, we receive that monthly, it's really just a single check. It's not broken down...
Not reconciled, that's right.
In terms of from what industries this, you know, comprise this lump sum that we get. I think there's a push, perhaps in other states, for Airbnb, those online companies that rent these short-term rentals, to be more transparent on their fees so that if you book through them, here are all the fees that you're paying. Because I don't think Airbnb, and I think VRBO, I believe they're also under that Airbnb umbrella. There are only really a couple of big players in the market now, I think. But if there's more transparencies on the fees that they're charging, that would give us at least some figure to check with the state to see if, if they're sending us, or at least to the state, what they should be. I mean, Mr. Lawrence makes a good point, but as long as it's not in Bitcoin, we might be in good shape, but...
Well, let me, let me respond. And it's not just for Airbnb, but anything, that one check we get. We need to be able to reconcile. The way it happens in the state of Mississippi now, you can file it by paper if you're quarterly. Every three months you report. Then you show gross tax and then what is subject to gross tax minus the deductions that you make. So if it's a hotel, the hotel says, what is the gross revenue for sales that is subject to sales tax? Then you do the arithmetic and the timing of reporting. So now you send a check along with, with your form. If you're not reporting quarterly, you report monthly using the TAP, the Tax Access Point Application, which you do this in an automated fashion. You cut the check right then and there during the deal. So that's the thing that's easily reported. If you have to, somebody has to make a, you know, a TAP entry once a month, and hopefully not just, you know, short-term rental, but everybody. But we don't have a reconciliation. We're asking the State Tax Commission and the DOR because that's the folks that we have to have some, you know, some relationship with, that we need to be able to reconcile that check. But also, it lets you know where the business, what my sick code, about, you know, industry that's generating it down.
And I mean, all municipalities face this issue. It's not just us.
No, it's just everybody, you know, everybody that's in business in the state of Mississippi keyed by private, by privileged license here in Biloxi, needs to, they will have a TAP account and they will report it. You have no choice. You do it one way or quarterly. If your business is not enough, you do it by paper and you actually use a TAP account to do that, too.
You may want to use a mic, Jerry, just for the people at home.
That didn't work.
When we issue a privileged license in our department, the state is notified. That's our notification to them that you should anticipate tax revenues coming in from this particular entity, and here's the way that it's being used. Also, whenever a license is issued, we notify the Hotel Motel Association to let them know as well that here's someone else that is on the radar now.
And they should be issued a sales tax account. That's the first step. So when, when they apply, that, that sales tax could be by the Department of Revenue or State Tax Commission. You know, I don't know exactly what the process is with, you know, they may have been preempted at the state level. I don't know the answer to that question, but we'll find it out.
And again, when they come back in to renew, they have to submit proof that they've paid their taxes for the previous year before we'll reissue the license for renewal.
Well, if there's anything we can do to tweak our ordinance, just as some sort of check and balance to help us...
Well, we could voluntarily, you know, as part of the deal, you show us your return.
Right.
A monthly return, 12 pieces of paper.
Right, but if we have, if we have to stick that in an ordinance or something, then I'm all for that. We just have to have some check and balance.
Done that on other occasions, I think, you know, with the incentives that...
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Barrett had a question.
That's already covered in our deal.
Hello? Okay. The problem is that these people that have a short-term rental in the city of Biloxi through Airbnb or VRBO are not paying into TAP. VRBO and Airbnb are the ones that collect these taxes. They fall under Nexus laws because if you have, if you're a national company and you have a certain amount of representatives in the state, you fall under Nexus laws. The Nexus laws require the mother company to collect the taxes. That's done through their software. So it looks like this person through the software is collecting the taxes, but that's going directly to VRBO and Airbnb. The problem that we run into is, is there a mechanism that Airbnb and VRBO have in place when they pay, which they're a large company, they're paying their sales tax, but is there a mechanism to break it down to decipher where those taxes originated from that they collected? Or are they just making one big payment every month to Mississippi? We collected this much sales tax and boom, it goes to the state and the state has no idea where this money came from and how to disperse it.
I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
No, well, like I said, if it's done that way, it needs to be, there must be a mechanism to reconcile it to the property. I mean, and if it's not that way, it needs to be that way.
Well, the burden is always going to be on the operator to provide the proof that they pay their taxes.
Now, they may have some kind of thing showing they collected that tax, the person that lives that is, actually has the VR, the rental.
Yeah.
But the problem that we have is on the state level between the company and the state. I don't believe there's a mechanism in place to decipher where those taxes originated from. So at the end of the month, let's just say Mississippi collects a million dollars in taxes from VRBO and Airbnb. They have no idea how to disperse that.
Well, that's something we need to ask for because, I mean, a hotel doesn't, when they do their sales tax return on a monthly basis, they don't tell what room was rented, okay? But they tell the gross business at that location. But it's not a, you know, unreasonable request that we need to get that reconciled.
And again, it's that way with every business in the city. We can't, we can't really tell you if these restaurants across the street have paid their taxes each year.
But the state can. And the state can if they're...
Yeah, but the difference is, this is being collected on national level versus a local level. And so the state can tell where this comes from. From a company like VRBO that's collecting from everywhere in the state, how does the Department of Revenue tell where that million dollars was originated from?
Because we don't have the ability to see whether or not Airbnb or VRBO paid the taxes for those people, we put the burden where we could within the ordinance that every year when they renew, it's your burden, it's as the operator, it's your responsibility to bring us proof that your taxes were paid or we won't renew your license.
And I understand that. That's not the problem. The problem, though, is how do we know that we're getting that back?
That's right.
Because we just like...
If that is the case, and I don't know that that is, and there's no way to, there should be a way. If there's no way, there needs to be a way. So we'll push our legislature and whatever we can through the State Tax Commission and Department of Revenue, who's holding, you know, the key to this deal. We'll see if we can, and we need to do that...
I have an online business and there's about seven or eight states that I have to collect tax for. At the end of the month, when we pay out, we don't do anything, but we make an online payment for a certain amount to that State Tax Commission. And we don't say it came from this county or this city or anything like that. We make one payment from our company to that. And so there's no way for that state to return that to the proper place because they have no idea what area it came from.
Well, they should be, I mean, in this industry, they should be able, you know, the right thing is to be able to get that reconciled. So the state is just keeping it?
I don't know. I'm just, or maybe they're just guessing, hey, you know, Biloxi has a lot, we're going to send them this much. But I mean, I have a business and I don't pay, I don't say where it originated in the state. And so they're not getting their return, return to the right places because they have no idea.
That's more of an online use tax and they have the, we have new formulas for that, for the infrastructure and formulas for cities and counties. But it's a good point you raised as far as, is there just one check going to Airbnb? And how would they be able to not only do the sales tax, they couldn't, how could they decipher the hotel tax? The individual owner who's renting their property, you would think they're going to have an account showing this much money came out of my payments for taxes. So maybe we can try to get some info...
So maybe we can try to get some information from the owners. But now, whether we're collecting it is a great point. We'll look into that.
Deming wants to chime in.
Like Madonna, just a one-name kind of guy. Workshop.
Yeah, baby.
I think the place we need to start is at the Tax Assessor's Office, and we probably need to talk to Shad White. You know, that, his office is very good at determining these things, and Airbnb, and I don't know about VRBO or any of the other companies, but Airbnb does subject their customers, and when I say their customers, I mean the people that are operating the tenants, tenancies, not the people that rent from them. Their customers are required to comply with local laws, too. And so I know that we do have some local cities here that have these lodging additional taxes. And so if they're collecting based off these local laws, I can almost assure you that they're reporting these taxes that are collected on local laws, but the Tax Assessor's Office would be the one that would answer that question, and probably a pretty easy answer if we just reach out to them.
Let me throw another wrinkle into this. The Airbnbs, the OTAs, whatever you want to call them, they also do a couple of things. They have guest pay programs and they have hotel collect programs. And the guest pay program pays them, and they send the hotel a virtual credit card for the amount that they're charging the hotel, not the guest. So it's a net amount that they're charging the hotel, the upcharge is hidden, and therefore the question is, are they paying the taxes on the upcharge hidden amount?
Right.
My guess would be no. Anyway, that's something else that has to be cleaned up.
We'll dig into, because not only for this industry, everything's a subject to sales tax. We need a reconciliation to that check we get, you know, like the twelfth of every month. But we'll report back to the council, you know, by the next time.
Go ahead.
If there's nothing else, I just wanted to chime in on the Bitcoin comment. It's up 500 bucks in the last hour. Maybe they want to take it.
And real quick, Mr. Jericho, a new epidemic, from what I've heard, is a realtor had posted photos of her client's home, and someone stole the pictures and posted them on Airbnb, and we are bringing them to court, because they're not registered to be short-term rentals, and they're saying that even with the situation as it is, we're still taking them to court. But can't they just file a police report, or?
The town is going to be so scared. And if we can't get where it's coming from, if it's not approved, we will deal with that as we get through it.
Should they file a police report? I would imagine. Okay, thank you. Moving on, Mr. Guines.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Walt to come up. Just had a few questions. Is there, just wanted to mainly ask about the progress on Magnolia Street. I see that they're doing a lot of paving, which is good, so it's starting to get a little progress going. Also know about the letter that we received already, so I want to talk to you and the mayor offline about that letter that we received from RRC. But is there any progress with, sent you some pictures of Magnolia Street, with those divots on the side and residents having a hard time getting in and out their driveway? How fast can we get that fixed?
So unfortunately, we don't have any progress yet on what we plan, what we're planning on doing, and one of our outside contractors, going to date contractor, just put a change order under the existing contract. Oscar Renda is focused on the main roads and getting them back to do tie-ins on those driveways off Magnolia. I don't see that their attention will be diverted to that until they get to that entire area. So I think, because you're right, some of those areas are pretty difficult to get into the driveway. So I think, in the interest of time and those residents, we take another tack and down that, and you and I and administration can talk about that, but we have a plan, we just need to see if one's okay with it.
Okay, and the other thing, like I said, I'll talk to you and the mayor offline about some of the others from that letter, about getting some of the other things corrected. And I guess the only other thing is that report that I asked for about the inspections, the camera inspections, how much is done and how much is not done. So if you can get that to me, I appreciate it.
Okay, that's my apologies, Councilman, I thought we'd already forwarded that, but we'll get that out. We have it all on the spreadsheet, it's pretty massive. Administration's aware of it, the contractor's aware of it, but I'll make sure to get that out, too. Starting the letter, though, I have a follow-up letter that's been reviewed by the attorneys to address what we received by email, so.
Okay, appreciate it, thanks. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Deming.
Kristy, Mr. Labata, hey, did you get my email regarding the sediment on the canal? I don't-
I just saw it, and I will have the list of areas to be, or maybe we'll take a look at it and see what's going on, but we'll try to get it out there.
Okay, and I think someone requested the specific location of the person that sent me the information. I just forwarded that to you earlier. Did you see the, I don't know if I sent it to you, or if I sent it to Billy Ray, the e-smith that has the drainage problem. I sent you an email last week.
I did, he sent me pictures, and I made the party to be happy, and I'll have the address on that.
Okay.
Just pictures, there was a, you got a resident, there are people that have a trash. If he sent that, I would have taken a look at it.
Okay, I'll make sure I get that to you this afternoon. Thank you.
Mr. Tizso?
Kristy, good 180. Just, have you heard from M-Dot on the demolitions, those structure demolitions on Oakmont Place?
No, not yet, I haven't. They asked for some additional information about two weeks ago, which I sent them last week, and I sent them an email this morning, asking for a update, and I haven't heard back yet.
Okay, and we can't move forward without their approval.
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Just a reminder that on Thursday, February 27th, at 5:30 at the Snyder Center, I'll have a Ward Five meeting. I have two a year. This will be the first of 2020. The other thing, Madam President, I'd like to request that the, we had a workshop last Tuesday on personnel ordinances regarding, I guess, compensation or benefits, and really we were bringing the language up to date. It'd been a while since some of that was revised. I'd request that we put it on the agenda for our next council meeting next Tuesday, and hopefully the council will take that up and we can move forward on that. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Mr. Deming wasn't done?
I'm sorry, Ms. Bell, it's all right. The bathrooms of the Pops Ferry Park across from Margaret Sherry Library, I think we were opening them during the day and closing them at night?
Is there a bathroom?
Yeah. Is there any way we can get back to that? We do have a lot of groups that are out there, and I was one of them this Sunday, and they were locked up, closed, so if we can make sure that we can open those in the morning-
I'll check into it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Glavin?
Yes, thank you. You know, it's great to see carnival season and, you know, the kids get recognized earlier today, and we got a big weekend coming up. We have Second Liner's Parade, along with the Neptune Night Parade, and that's going to be a lot of fun. Actually, it's two weeks from now, I think. Two weeks is the parade. But there, also Rice University, and just tell you the power of Conference USA. So Conference USA played at MGM Park with USM in the baseball tournament. Rice baseball team was one of the participating teams, but we also had the head football coach from Rice there supporting Rice University. He contacted the Tourism Bureau a couple of days ago and has great interest in coming down here. They play a game, I think it's October 30th, in Hattiesburg, but they're going to come visit the coast, bring the entire team and staff, practice on the coast, and then go play Southern that Saturday in Hattiesburg. But it just goes to show you, you know, how if you take care of people, other people hear about it and they want to come, come visit us as well. With that, I also want to recognize a gentleman that's here, it's the director, tournament director for the Rappiscan Golf Tournament, Steve Schottmer. He wants to address the council and talk about a few things about the tournament this year.
Thank you, Kenny. I know we are on carnival season, and my girl's here, and I do want to just take a minute just to give you an update as far as what's to come, as Mr. Glavin alludes to our golf tournament. It's only 41 days away, if I'm counting right. Last week of March, again, out of all, we bring best golfers in the world here to the charter community, plus just a big table basis. We have new rookies, so to speak, aged, you know, who are coming this year with worldwide playing from guys like Angel Barrera, who was a two-time major champion, to Keith Houston, who was a golf man, to Ernie Els, who's in the world of golf, all the majors. So it's been a great avenue to kind of like, frankly, on the coast, with tourism and economic development. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that, again, as we march the next 41 days to the golf tournament, to continue to remind the community that the tournament is, we've opened the gates to all spectators of general admission, sponsored that, so it's free of charge for all spectators to come. And certainly, what we're doing is more and more about community involvement than it is just golf. Yes, we have a pretty golf craze, community, certainly golfers and casino courses and golf fans. We've taken an approach with Rappiscan, as I was sponsored, to do more for the non-golf fans, which if the fan or spectator is looking to have a good time, or to have a beverage out with friends, to see these people. So we're doing more in that realm, events like a new chef's dinner, integration with March Madness, being the last week of regional weekends, we add a new plus partnership with the casinos to capture that attention, certainly with basketball going on, but then also a live golf event. I think what Rappiscan is doing is bringing more and more people, yes, they do have some roots here, down the Ocean Springs, and on the coast, but they're also bringing more and more people, not only from half states, but globally. They had entities from Border Patrol, TSA, to airline executives, security forces, you name it. And I think the coolest thing that I can say or on is what we're also doing for charities for community. As of this point this year, we're already pacing $250,000, hopefully charities over, what we give next year, will happen until May to go, so it's roughly nine months. What we've challenged our team is to break the $1 million mark to charities. I think that just goes to show the magnitude of what we're doing, and I think we're pacing pretty close to that here in the next couple of months. So I just wanted to, one, give an update as we head into March, the next 41 days, and also thank you for your continued support, both financially and emotionally, to continue to uplift this event as we march into the 11th year. So that's all, but at least get that word out here, because getting, you know, so focused on saying what's going on here February, and what's March turns golf this year, so, and I appreciate you giving me a minute to address that.
You're welcome. And then I just wanted to do one more shout-out, Susan Hunt, for the bread. All the council certainly appreciates it, and I just have to do a bit of extra running to get those, a couple of extra calories off, and that concludes my report.
Mr. Barrett?
I got to figure out how to operate this thing. Just a couple of things, I want to give a shout-out to Mike Hostly and his team with Public Works. Had several things come up in the last week or so, and they've gotten right on it and got the job done. They always do a great job. And then I'd planned on having a award meeting in March, but I don't think that the community center will be ready by then, so I'm going to hold that off until we get that finished. Actually, another thing is I went out there yesterday, and I walked through, it's looking really good. They got the frame for the stage, and I think the dressing rooms off to each side up, and they've got the framing up for the courtyard. The building's closed in, and they're about to take, take the wall separating the old structure and the new structure down, so it's coming along really nicely. So it's going to be a great asset for the community. That's all I have right now.
Okay. We'll move on to public agenda, where we have citizen comments. We have a total time allotted of 45 minutes. Each citizen gets three minutes each to speak. When you reach the desk, please sign your name and address, as well as state it out loud for the record. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? Come on.
Uh-oh.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm meeting some Cub Scouts here at 5 to tour, and please their governmental, and talk about council resolutions, ordinances. I got a small game tonight, Mr. Clayos. I'll call you later. By Ocean Springs tomorrow, and then-
Good afternoon, members. My name is Lisa Carrillo. I live in 14th Street, Hudson Road. I'm here representing the Emerald Lake community. We are a subdivision in Hudson Crown, with like five of our families in military. We are here in hopes of seeking the resolution of excessive speed limit in Hudson Crown Road. We are being afraid for the life and safety of our families. Constantly, the cars, money, school buses, motorcyclists, contractors, weight management, CEO of Biloxi Dump Trucks, and private vehicles are being spirited home. We are presenting constant vehicle fueling, and it's been constantly regenerating if you are over 45 miles per hour. And we are also being presenting a problem motorcycle racing in front of our homes, as in death of Doggo De Castro, that happened last year in August. As I said, every day, we fear for the safety of our children, family members and friends, and come and visit us, and we are here begging you to please help us to find a solution to keep our community safe, maybe putting some speed bump and reducing the speed limit on Hudson Crown, near the Emerald Lake community. Some signs saying children at play, or perhaps slow down, and flashing lights, or whatever solution you can give us. I'm going to pass around some copies that we did of the recent accidents that we've been presenting.
I can pass them down if you want. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I also passed around, I'm here with some of my neighbors, with Andy and Ms. Bertha, and I also passing the signatures of the other neighbors that couldn't come, all of them signed.
She wants it to go in the minutes.
Do you want this to go in the minutes?
Pardon?
You want this to go in the minutes, right?
Yes.
I would imagine so.
In the record, you want to enter this into the record?
Yes. Thank you. I'm just, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Uh-oh.
I've been through this time or two. It's the Suzanne, I live at 429 Sailor Drive. I'm part of the Sailor Place people, and I went to the zoning meeting recently on Bertucci's project. I came away feeling that after all the finagling and development of trying to get around the zoning, and by giving, saying the only way they could give us concessions at all was to, you know, pass the project as is without- at all was to, you know, pass the project as is without changing the zoning, and then go ahead and, then they could give us concessions. When I went to the planning and zoning, I came away with the feeling that we were losing those concessions, maybe not immediately, but mostly. All right, they only offered us three little major things. One was a green space, one was the gate closed for emergency only on Bonneville, and then a fence. Okay. We, we came away thinking, okay, he said he's gonna put the fence, if the new owner allows it, on our back property. Well, if he does that, okay, first of all, there's two parts of that, two caveats, okay? If the new owner allows it, and that's not what we decided, and if he does put it on our back fence, we lose the green space. And then there was a comment at the planning and zoning, and I mean, I don't know where it came from, it came from the planning and zoning side, they said, well, until the city decides to make it a thoroughfare. And I'm going, okay, there goes my gate. So now, three things, and we're only talking about that one side of Sailor Drive on our back fence. I'm not complaining about the rest of it, I've gotten over it, I've moved on. But those three little things that we agreed to, I would like to keep those in my perspective. Thank you so much.
Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Yes, sir.
August 4th, Sailor. I too would like to speak to the citizens. The, leaving here last time, those three items we thought were going to be in our favor, and after zoning, at the planning commission meeting, it seemed like those were not.
Can you bring the mic closer?
And after the, is that better? Okay. And after the zoning or the planning committee meeting, those things fall up in the air. Now, to open that road to traffic, it's going to drive with my, it's all crumbling basically of my driveway. It was repaved not too many years ago. Not, it's.
Mayor, can, can you give him your mic? This one keeps going.
It's probably gonna be a bad back.
Try that.
All right, it's better?
Better.
Yeah, much better.
Where do we need to start?
Probably start over. Start over.
Okay. I'm gonna speak to the same issues that Susan did, with the opening of the road, the fence, the green space. Opening that road to Sailor is going to destroy that road. It's already crumbling, again. I've got a pothole developing at the end of my driveway, as it is right now. We left this meeting last time, we really felt these three items were going to be incorporated into the plan. After the last planning commission meeting, it's been seen that stuff. Not to give those people on that side fence, I believe the comment I heard was made was, we'll leave it up to the homeowners. And why should that expense be put on them? It's not their project. They're not making profit from this. If you take the green space away from them, you're gonna have two-story houses in their backyards. They have very small backyards, as it is. You're gonna take their total privacy away from them. This is a big project, it's gonna make Bertuzzi a lot of money. And a few little concessions, to be a good neighbor, is hardly too much to ask for. I mean, we all, we all know this isn't gonna stop, we've got news the idea we're gonna have major congestion, worse than it is now, backed up to Sailor Drive at certain parts of the day. And it's only gonna add to all that. And on top of it, let's throw the cars on Sailor Drive. Let's take away the privacy of the people that live there, so somebody can make a few extra dollars. I'm all for somebody using their property the way they choose to, but when it interferes on other people's property, that's not right. And I hope this council takes the correct actions on this for all the people, all the citizens. Don't be, don't be fooled that there's only two of us here. One-thirty meetings, working people can't go to. Luckily, we are the fortunate ones that are retired. But trust me, if this was a different time, they would be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone on my left, your right? Okay? Anyone on my right, your left? Yes, ma'am.
Your kids are being so good.
Hi, my name is Andrea Donahue. I live at 14139 Hudson Crown Road, and I'm here with Lizeth and Berna, Bertha, they left already, but.
Thank you.
So I'm here to talk about the speeding that's been happening on our road. Me and my family moved in there less than a year ago, we're military members, and it's, it's been scary. I didn't realize that it was an issue when we bought our home, and honestly, if I had known how dangerous that road is, I would not, we would not have purchased the home. When we visited, we saw a few garbage men, you know, drive by, they weren't speeding, it was fine. Since then, I've noticed a lot of speeding. We don't have sidewalks, it's scary to back out of our driveway, friends won't visit us because they can't back out of our driveway. Our mailbox was hit about two weeks ago by a speeding dump truck that went up onto our grass and hit our mailbox. I don't feel safe checking my mail. I definitely don't let my children out of my sight when we go to check the mail or we go out to the van. It's, it's not safe. I don't know what can be done, maybe speed bumps or more police patrolling the area, but it's, something really has to be done before someone else loses their life. There was a motorcycle accident around the corner from my home, and a man died there. And then just right after my mailbox was hit two weeks ago, another car ran into a neighbor's yard, just a few doors down from me. It's very scary, and one of these days, a car is gonna hit a child or run into one of our homes. Lots of wildlife have been hit, we're, we're seeing dead animals on the road all the time. So please, if you could do something to help us, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone in the back of the room? Okay, citizen comments are now closed. Move on to the policy agenda, Ms. Lucy.
Ordinance to approve a zoning change for a property identified as 140 Brady Drive.
Previously moved by? Barrett and Glavin. Any discussion, Barrett?
None.
Glavin?
Okay, no, I don't have any either. Go ahead.
Does he?
The only, wait for Mr. Creel. The, the only question I have, I know there are three curb cuts on, on Beach Boulevard there for this property, this is, these properties, that, that will be an RV park, and the six parcels along Brady Drive were originally requested to be rezoned, but the planning commission reduced that just to one of those lots right behind the gas station.
Yes, sir.
And I know with the, the fire department needing more than one way in and out, and if you would explain under these circumstances why they need that ingress egress to Brady. If you have, if you have three curb cuts there off Highway 90, you can get in and get out, and I know that there's some kind of really funky mathematical, mathematical calculation based on, I guess, the roads or access, really, but if you would just review that briefly.
Well, the, the short version is, is that the fire code requires an alternate access into a piece of property in the event that there's a wreck or a problem on Beach Boulevard, they would have to have a secondary emergency access to get into the property. So originally, the developer had asked for six lots on Brady Drive to be rezoned to CB. The planning commission denied the request on five of those lots, and only approved the southernmost lot that is owned by Majestic Oaks as the ingress and egress, and it will have a Knox box on it, so only fire department access or emergency access will be allowed in and out of that, of that area.
So that's the only time that that Brady Drive entrance or exit would be used?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Weston, Jerry, why are you at the rezoning of the community business?
Well, the majority of their property is already community business, but they bought the property that used to belong to the Biloxi Housing Authority, and that property is owned RM30, it's not zoned for an RV park, so they're asking for the rezoning on that to include in with their overall development, and then just the one lot to be rezoned, so it's, RM30 does not allow RV park, and the CB does.
So this concerning the short-term rentals also?
They haven't mentioned that yet.
They hadn't mentioned it yet, but they'll change it in the middle of the stream, so. That's where we're going with this, too.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Six one? Six one with George against. Six one with George against. Moving on to Resolution B.
Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision plat approval for property presently identified as 2330 Atkinson Road.
I'll motion that, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Mr. Jerry, come on up. So I'm guessing we're all confused here? Have anything changed?
Okay. The, when the project went through the planning commission the first time with an overlay district, there was an agreement that the roads leading over to the Sailor Estates would only be allowed for emergency access, and that's still the case. They'll have Knox boxes on them, and will only be allowed in the event that there's an emergency in there. The comment that was made at the planning commission by Mr. Stifel, they asked the question about, you know, those roads being opened up, and he said, well, they won't be opened up, you know, unless the city decides at some point that they want to open it up, which is, which is always an option down the road, but that requirement would have to come back to the planning commission and back to the city council for approval, and we don't anticipate that happening.
So Mr. Stifel is just saying, saying that he does not have the power to do that, correct?
To open it up? No, he doesn't. When this plat's approved, it'll be approved as Knox box gates on those accesses going over to Sailor Drive. Now, when the planning commission meeting was held, there was also some discussion about a forty-foot space between Sailor Estates and between Dr. Bertuzzi's property. At the time, we, and what that included was a fifteen-foot easement right along the Sailor Estates property lines, and then a twenty-five-foot access easement for the city to be able to get back into the lift station, there's a sewer lift station back in there that we have to maintain access to. Well, after we did some additional research after that meeting, we found out the fifteen-foot green space is already in the backyards of the neighbors that live on the Sailor Estates side, so they already have that fifteen-foot green space there. The twenty-five-foot is still there behind what is now their fences, this will be on the west side. And what Mr. Stifel has agreed to do, there are some trees that run along that fence line behind the Sailor Estates, they've agreed to leave those trees there, but they can't commit to a twenty-five-foot total green space because of the access that has to be maintained for us to service that sewer lift station that's back in there on Dr. Bertuzzi's property.
So what about the fencing? Did they say they were gonna leave it up to the owners?
The fencing? No, the agreement was is that they would put in an eight-foot fence along the backs of those fences that are already there to help block it. Now, you know, there's gonna be a question of, are we gonna have to remove fences, move trees in order to build that eight-foot fence on there, and it might be necessary to remove some trees or to trim some trees in order to get the eight-foot in there.
But you're gonna put, on that you, but they're gonna put the eight-foot fence, not leave it up to the owners, correct?
That, yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else? No? Nothing else was changed or anything?
So. You said, so there will be, right now, there's, on the backside of the Sailor Drive, there's fences in place, and fifteen-foot easement goes into, past beyond those fence, that fence line, is that correct?
No, the fifteen-foot easement, there are two easements there, one fifteen-foot and one twenty-five-foot. The fifteen-foot, at the time, we did not know if that fifteen-foot was on the outside of the Sailor residence fence or on the inside, and after doing some additional digging, we found out they already have that fifteen-foot easement in their backyard.
So it's closed in in their fence line?
That's correct.
So beyond their fence line, the fence for the new properties will be, what, twenty-five foot from their fence line instead of the forty?
There's another twenty-five, twenty-five foot in there that, that will remain an easement, so any development would have to start beyond that twenty-five foot for the backyards of those houses.
So any fence that would go up, and there's gonna be at least an eight-foot fence, is that what's the agreement?
Eight-foot, yes, sir.
And that's at least twenty-five foot from their property line, from their fence line?
The fence would either be right up against their fences, if they wanted the, their six, most of the fences on the back of the Sailor are six-foot, but the agreement was is that the developer would provide an eight-foot fence, whether it's right up against their fences, if they want those to be eight-foot, or over on the other side of the twenty-five foot. Now, you might want to hear that from Dennis.
Well, how does, how does that give you access to get between those two properties if they put a fence right up against a fence to get to that pump station you're talking about?
Well, that's not gonna affect the access in there because that comes off of Atkinson Road.
Okay, I'm confused, okay. All right. So you're saying that the fence line can actually go up, the way this stating, go right up against their fences? So in reality, what you're saying is no structures as far as a shed or a house can be built within twenty-five foot of their fence line?
That's correct, it has to remain open for truck access into the property.
A city truck.
Or, or Harrison County trucks, either one.
Okay. Mr. Stifel? Go ahead and give us your pitch.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead and give us your pitch.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead and give us your pitch.
Basically, everything Jerry said was true, I might be able to clarify just a little bit, the, the, there were four main issues that, that the owner agreed as a result of a number of public hearings, award meetings. One was the, the forty-foot of green space between the residences. Number two was the eight-foot fence. Number three was the Knox box on Bonneville to prevent traffic, construction traffic, and just regular residential traffic. And it's okay, Mr. Dr. Bertuzzi does not have any issue with pedestrian traffic. And it's okay, Mr. Dr. Bertuzzi does not have any issue with pedestrian traffic. So we can go ahead and make, when we make the connection with the road, we can also connect the sidewalks. And folks can walk from subdivision to subdivision. We don't see a problem with that. As far as opening the street in the future, that's not a call for Dr. Bertuzzi or, or me, per se. It'll be a dedicated city street. The city would have full authority as to whether or not to open that street in the future if they decided to. That's their prerogative. The last item that was left off that was neglected to be mentioned was that Dr. Bertuzzi has agreed to provide a 10-foot additional right-of-way to Atkinson Road to, in an effort to contribute to alleviating the traffic problems.
And what's going on with that?
I'm sorry?
What's going on with that?
As far as that's moving forward, GRPC is working with the city. And I'm not sure exactly what the stage is of the design phase, but as I understand it, we've already had initial meetings with GRPC and the city. And that process, I believe, is moving forward. We are still months and months away. We're towards the end of this year getting all of our permits and approvals for this project. So we're not a big hurry for that. I don't know exactly what the city's pace is as far as upgrading Atkinson Road and alleviating the traffic there. The other thing I was going to mention, just to, just to reiterate, and I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but we are, the 8-foot wood fence would actually go on the property line between the two subdivisions. There's a 15-foot easement, drainage easement on the east side, which is in the Sailor Estates backyards. That would be untouched and remain the same. There are some old wood fences, some of them are six feet tall or less. The new eight-foot wood fence would go essentially next to, adjacent to the existing fences on the west side of that property line where the eight-foot fence would go. And of course, there's a number of fairly large ornamental trees that are on the property line. So we can, we don't have a problem, it doesn't do us any good to cut these trees down. It would, it would be as, probably the best thing for all the neighbors on both sides of the property line to leave as many trees up there as you can. What the utility authority and the city normally do, their normal practice is to keep these drainage and utility easements clear and clean of trees. And the reason for that is the root systems will grow down and damage the pipes, the culverts underneath. And then you have a big expensive project to rework all the drainage culverts or the utilities, water and sewer. And so these easements are normally kept clear of, in other words, they can't be wooded and just left like a thick growth of trees because they'll go down and interfere with the culverts underneath the ground. But yes, there'll be a minimum 40-foot green space between structures, the structures that are there now and the new structures and the new subdivision.
A quick question again for Mr. Crell, sorry. So if we were to vote against this, Mr. Bertuzzi still has the right to build a subdivision, correct?
No, you have to approve the preliminary plat. And approval of the preliminary plat, what it does, it allows Dennis to move forward generating the infrastructure plans for Phase 1. So we have to have council approval or this can't move forward. Now, concerning your question about where we are on the traffic study, the council at the last meeting approved the activation for Gulf Regional to move forward studying this intersection. And that's what they're doing. They're moving forward with it.
I could have sworn that it was said, though, last time, that he could do subdivision. It was all the rest of the project that was, you know.
No, you're approving Phase 1, you're approving Phase 1 preliminary plat, which is the residential, which is the one nearest the Sailor Estates subdivision. And he'll be back with Phase 2 and Phase 3 later on. But this is, it was all approved at the March last year when you approved the overlay district.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. So this is Sailor Place. This is Sailor Place. I want to be sure I understand this clearly. This is Sailor Place.
That's a piece of bread.
And a home.
It's a loaf of bread.
It's bought with Bitcoin, okay? So this is Sailor Place. Here's my home, and I'm looking west onto the proposed Bertuzzi development. And here's my backyard fence. And that 15-foot easement is in my backyard.
That's correct.
So that's, that's 15 feet. So I'm assuming my house, the closest it can be is, what, 15 and a half feet?
In the rear?
Yeah.
No, 25 feet.
So, all right, so I'm 25 feet with a, and 15 of that is with the easement for the Sailor property homeowner. Now, you've got this 25-foot easement right here, which means I'm going to buy a house that I like in the Bertuzzi development. And we've got this 25-foot easement here. And I'm trying to understand where the fence that the Bertuzzi development will construct, is it going to be here, 25 feet from the other fence? Because my understanding is that it is not. It would be right up against this, is that correct?
That's what I just heard Dennis say, yes.
Okay. And, and given that fact, if there's any sort of repair or anything to the fence that's required, well, somebody's going to figure that out. We don't know who, we don't know how they'll repair that fence, but I just see that may be a point of contention and an issue in future years. But if this fence, an eight-foot fence, is right next to a six-foot fence, that means this structure's got to be 25 feet over at least, and then another?
25 feet.
25 feet.
To the rear of the house.
The rear of the house. So there's 50 feet right here.
Yes, sir.
So this 50 feet and add another?
25.
25. So there's 75 feet would be the minimum distance between the structures.
That's correct.
Now. So I got, come on, give me your breath. Now, the trick is to keep all three lows when this is done. So here are my new Bertuzzi homes. And I'd like my property fenced. So I'm going to run a fence right here. And my neighbor says, good idea, and I'll put a fence right here. That's possible, correct?
I'm going to let Dennis answer that question. You're talking about between the Bertuzzi houses, putting fences between those?
Putting fences between that. I don't know if they would be prohibited in a covenant or?
My guess would be, is that most developers now build fences around the yards. They separate each yard with a wooden fence.
Would that be the case here, Mr. Stifel? So each house then is going to have a fenced-in backyard? Okay, most if not all. Let's say all three of these homeowners say, that's great, I've got a pet, great that it's fenced. This 25-foot easement now is for utilities?
Access.
Access. So anybody who's fencing goes over this easement may have it, have to take it down if heavy equipment's got to run back here to service this easement, is the point I'm trying to make.
Well, let me just, the ordinance does not allow anyone to build a fence over an easement. The new ordinance does not allow that to happen.
Does this, does this development fall under the new ordinance?
Yes, sir, it does.
So what you're telling me is the home, if I want a fence in my backyard to keep my dog in my backyard, I really can't do that? Or I would have to, I can only run my fence back to? You don't need a name.
So would that, would that be 25-foot from that back fence, when that would end?
From, from the back of the houses facing Sailor. You've got a 25-foot setback in their rear backyard. Then you've got the 25-foot access road that goes to the lift station. Then you've got another 25 feet between the edge of that easement and the back of the houses that face the Bertuzzi Park houses.
Okay. So my point is, when I first said I want my dog to stay in my backyard and I want it fenced, that fence is running over the easement. What you, if I understood correctly, what you just said is you can't put fences over this easement, correct?
Right.
Does Mr. Stifel, you understand that? Okay. So there is then this access that's open to anybody who wants to walk through there, for that matter?
My guess is that's going to have a gate on it that would only allow access. We don't allow just anyone to get to our lift stations.
Okay, so there would be a gate here. Now, we've got, I think it's Bonneville?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's going to be gated.
That's right.
And I think it also, Bonneville also runs to the other side of Sailor. Is that just, that road was never completed into, is it Magnolia Bay?
It was designed, the old way of designing subdivisions was that there was an intent to have connectivity between them. And just like Channelmark, we have some subdivisions where there was a road that led up to the adjacent property, even though the adjacent property was not developed. But the theory was is that when that adjacent property developed, that there would be connectivity between the two.
Okay, so because Bonneville runs right here and we're going to have pedestrian access, if I understood correctly, right there at Bonneville, even though it's gated, you'd have foot traffic permitted, I guess, to walk through between the neighborhood. So this, this would be open with the exception of some sort of gate on either end?
Yes, sir.
To restrict access? Okay, I just wanted to be sure I understood that. I want to be sure everybody else understood that as well.
So.
I'm not done yet, I'm having to, hand me that loaf of, no.
You need a coffee cup?
Not yet, not yet. No, but I do have, I want to look to another issue, and that is there are 133 trees that will be removed and 126 are protected trees. And I know that, Peter, I know that we were, had been talking about some sort of tree bank or mitigation bank or something. And I'm thinking, currently, if we're removing 133 trees, how many would have to be planted? And in this case, it illustrates a need, I think, for a mitigation bank because we don't want to say you've got to plant, what is it, a three-to-one ratio?
That's correct.
So this developer's got to plant roughly 400 trees, whatever, somewhere. Well, obviously, he's removing them from his property. He doesn't want to put them somewhere else, which creates other issues. But I just want to use, take this opportunity to point out the need for a tree mitigation bank. And also, if we're going to look at establishing that mitigation bank, it would be great if some of those funds could be used for irrigation for these trees that are planted wherever they might be, to include that. So that in the future, if developers just want to write a check to cover the tree mitigation rather than to plant this stuff. It's just a thought. The, the next thing that concerns me is the traffic on Atkinson Road. I know that we've, we have a study that Gulf Coast Regional Planning is, is going to work on, I think. Do we have any idea when we may have the results of that study?
Not at this point, but they do know that we're under some serious time pressure to get it done. Now, in the interim, what's going to happen is that as the developers are putting in the infrastructure, they have agreed to have a road that goes from Phase 1 directly over to Pops Ferry Road so that they're not dumping their traffic out onto Atkinson as a part of the construction that's going to be going on.
Is Mr., I thought I saw Mr. Yarrow earlier, is he still here? May not be. I'm just looking for a reasonable timeline. And let me, let me tell you why it's of concern to me. So we've got, what is it, 111 units, I think, for this portion of the development, with more on the way a couple of years from now in Phase 2. And this first phase is anticipated to take about how long, Mr. Stifel? About, about two years. So my thinking is, just follow me, I'm wondering, when might we have the results of the traffic study? Would it be in six months, or is it going to be a year?
This traffic study is being funded by MDOT through GRPC. GRPC is not doing the traffic study. City of Biloxi is doing the traffic study. We are in the process of getting all the MDOT approvals in place. Just last week, no, maybe about two weeks ago, you passed a resolution for project activation, remember that? We had a discussion about project activation. That was what this was for, for MDOT to activate this funding for this traffic study. So I've submitted that resolution to them, asking them to activate this project. They have to submit an MOU back to us. It has to be, come back to you for approval. And then we have to begin a negotiation with the design engineering firm for the traffic study, and MDOT has to approve that. So there are quite a, the point of me saying all this is there are quite a few steps that have to happen before we can even start the traffic study. And it has to go through the MDOT process, which, as we know, takes a little bit longer than normal. So we're looking at probably six months to a year before we have final results on our traffic study. Maybe sooner if we're lucky. Studies tend to go through the MDOT process faster than a construction project, but it's going to be a few months.
Okay. The, I really like this, I really like this project, honestly. But the timing, and follow me on this, I'm thinking, okay, we get started, construction begins a year into this, 14, 15 months. And, you know, I've been checking on the MDOT house demolitions
Yes.
For three, four, five, six months now. And that's just knocking down abandoned structures. But I'm thinking, all right, once we get the results of this study, I would say it's going to say, gee, you need to widen that road, wouldn't you think? We don't know, that's why we do the study. But to, just to be safe, nobody has to offer an opinion. But I'm thinking it'll come back saying, you've got heavier traffic, you're going to need to widen that road. Then we've got to acquire property for Atkinson. And then which side of Atkinson are you going to purchase? And all those homes, and that purchase will take a long time. A year or two, we see that with the Pops Ferry extension. So I guess, in a perfect world, we'd have done this traffic study two years ago. But in fairness to, to the developer and the engineer, I don't know if two years ago they planned to be where they are right now. But that, that's my biggest concern. Not to mention the Pops Ferry Bridge, which is a whole nother issue and how that impacts the traffic, although I'm sure that will be included in the study. So I said, go ahead, Jerry.
As, as a part of what you're approving today, the developer has already agreed to give a minimum of 10 feet on his side of the property for additional right-of-way.
And, and I certainly appreciate that. And I'm guessing that probably came about because of the discussion and the comments with the planning commission. But that's only the width of the Bertuzzi, that's only the length of the Bertuzzi property along Atkinson. So you still have just a small, two-lane road, relatively speaking, a fully improved road. You may need property on both sides of that, really. And, and what complicates the matter is all the traffic from the VA coming through the Hiller Park. A shortcut, everybody trying to beat the light at the other intersection at Pass Road. That's what really makes this hairy. So I would just say, I really like this project. I just think we should wait until we get the results of this traffic study. And I can't support it right now, but I would hope that maybe a year from now, we'd have the results of a traffic study that would say, here's what you need to do.
And I'm doing my best to streamline that traffic study through the MDOT process. On a traffic study, the thing that takes the most time is going through the MDOT process. The study itself doesn't take a lot of time. Maybe a month at most, collect the data, they write their report, it's a very quick process. It's just getting through the MDOT process. So I'll try to streamline that and push on MDOT to get those approvals back to us. Of course, we've been pushing on for Oakmont, too, and we're not there yet.
Well, in my, in my walnut-sized brain, MDOT's sluggishness is only, I guess, exceeded by that of CSX Railroad. So anyway, I'm done with all my questions, thank you.
I just, just to make sure I understand correctly. So the three issues, the gate between the subdivisions, that's taken care of. The second one, the eight-foot fence. Now, just so I understand correctly, an eight-foot fence will run along the fences that are currently in place, which is the back of the property lines on Sailor.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Between that fence and if there, if the property owner wants another fence, would be 25-foot. So the end of their backyard, if they were to close it in, would actually end 25-foot from the eight-foot fence that would be put along the property line of Sailor.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. So why would you not just move that eight-foot fence 25-foot away from their property lines? I mean, it would save the developer money.
The, the developer agreed to the eight-foot fence as an accommodation to the neighbors.
But my question is, my question is, why wouldn't we move it 25-foot from their property line? And then that cuts away the back of a fence that they would have to build two instead of one fence?
The concern at the time, when this went through the property from the property owners, was the visibility of looking over their fence and seeing, you know, one and a half houses as opposed to seeing one house right behind each lot. a half houses as opposed to seeing one house right behind each lot. So the developer agreed to the eight-foot fence as an accommodation to the neighbors in Sailor Drive.
Okay. But regardless if the fence is against their fence, or if it's 25-foot away, they cannot put a fence structure or anything within 25-foot of that property line, correct?
You're talking about the rear property line of Sailor?
Of Sailor, from that. So technically, their backyard would not end against the fence line, it would end 25-foot from the fence line.
They either put, all right, remember this property all belongs to Dr. Bertuzzi.
I understand.
Even, even the access easement belongs to Dr. Bertuzzi. So he can put the fence down at his property line, which is right against neighbors' fences, or they can move that fence over 25 feet over to the other side of the easement.
Okay. So my question, though, is, my question is this, no structure, including a fence, going, I guess that would be east and west, can go in that 25-foot area?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the, that's.
Under our new ordinance, I mean, think about it, we would be blocking the access to the sewer lift station, and every time we had to get back there, we'd have to remove every fence running east and west all the way to the lift station.
Okay, that's my only question. I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing in that 25-foot area, then you add the 15, that's the 40-foot. And just as a reassurance, most of Mr. Stifel's developments in the city of Biloxi have been in my ward, and I have found him to be a man of his word. If he says he's gonna do something, he does. In developments, problems arise, but I have also found that when problems do arise, it's some, Mr. Stifel addresses those problems, and he, he does stick to his word, so.
I've found that as well, yes. Let me speak to the issue about waiting on until we get the results of the study. Always, whenever we're considering a subdivision development, and, and you know all the ones that we've done in Wool Market, there was always the concern from the neighbors that they're gonna wake up tomorrow morning, there's gonna be traffic jams all over the place. And you go up there now, and you look at these developments that are up there, very, very organized, very neatly done subdivision developments, that Dennis actually designed a number of them. And you see no traffic jams there. Now, the majority of the traffic problems that we have on Atkinson Road are typically early in the morning and late in the afternoon. And the developers already agreed to the accommodation to make sure that they're not gonna be dumping their construction traffic out onto Atkinson Road. They're gonna use a cut-through road that goes over to Pops Ferry to get people to it. The only reason we're talking about this traffic study is because of this development. And always, the, the traffic improvements that the city's involved in and the development can continue simultaneously, so that by the time they get ready for construction, which is probably going to be at least a year away, then we'll have the results of the traffic study in place. But holding up one to the other, I'm just concerned, that's gonna send a terrible message to developers in this town. And we, we need to allow both to go ahead and proceed simultaneously if we can.
Jerry, we got the 40-foot easement, what's underneath there?
I'm sorry?
What's in the ground?
On their side of the property, I think there's, it's a drainage easement, maybe a utility easement, but then in the 25-foot easement, that's an access easement that just goes back to the lift station.
Well, why would anybody build a fence on top of another fence? I'm just, I got, he's gonna, he's gonna build an eight-foot fence, it doesn't matter where you build it at.
Okay, again, again, I think, I just got to saying this, I'll say it again. The reason for the eight-foot fence was because of the neighbors' concerns about visibility. Dennis agreed to, or the developer agreed to provide that eight-foot fence as an accommodation to the neighbors. If they don't want an eight-foot fence against their fence, I'm sure that Dennis will be happy to move that fence over to the other side of the 25-foot easement, because if they're having to build two fences, an eight-foot one and a six-foot one, that would cut their cost down significantly to just build a fence on the other side of the 25-footies.
That just makes sense. I mean, no reason to build on top of the easement, or whatever you wanna call it.
Mr. Stifel, you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, and these are, these are decisions that were made by the developer, not me. And so I'm kind of the relay guy. But the decision was made to plot, to provide an eight-foot fence adjacent to the existing fence in the rear yards of the Sailor Place residents. The, the, the reason, you know, Dr. Bertuzzi, as Jerry said, owns the property all the way to their fence. That's the reason why the eight-foot fence would go there, because these people own that property. Now, if they want, if they wanna fence their backyard, if they have a dog, or for some reason, privacy, then they have the right to do that. And, and if the city's ordinance says they can't extend these fences all the way back to the eight-foot fence, then they would fence whatever they wanna fence, you know, whatever they can fence. In some cases, they may not, they may decide not to fence their backyards if, if the fence is gonna be that, that tight there. Is there, is there a specific question?
Yeah, mine is, build an eight-foot fence 25 feet away from the property. That's how you do it.
Say that again?
Y'all build it on top of another fence, that's just, don't make any sense.
Well, it's done all the time.
Well, I'm just saying, all you're gonna do.
You soon not do it.
First of all, you separate the backyard from that open 25 feet.
Yeah.
So you have no worry about anybody walking up and down it. I mean, it just makes sense. Throw an eight-foot fence, just build it 25 feet away from the, the easement, and just lay it, I mean, it just, I don't understand what the problem is here. That's, to me, it's simpler and easier for y'all to do that.
Yeah, and frankly, I don't see a problem with that, but that, that's not my call. I mean, I can relay that to the developer and to the builder. Chances are, that's not a big issue. But that was not the intent. You know, the, all the meetings that we've had so far, and the developers aware of them, the builders aware of them, that, that we've been talking with, the, the, it was always the intent to put the eight-foot fence adjacent to, basically just to increase the height of the fence that they had now. And that was, that was our understanding. What I'm hearing now is something a little bit different. You know, they still want the eight-foot fence, I guess, but they want it on the other side of the 25-foot easement. You know, I, I don't know how well that, I don't see a big problem with that, it doesn't change the houses. You know, the houses will still go.
Don't change anything.
So basically, just move the eight-foot fence over 25 feet, so it's still eight-foot.
Away from the easement.
And then you only have to build one fence. So it shouldn't be a problem, right?
Well, the, the, the green space is gonna be there anyway. The fence is not gonna affect the green space. The trees that are on the property line are, are not gonna be affected, they'll stay up. So really, it's not gonna make a whole lot of difference, and if they leave their six-foot wood fences there, then they're not gonna be able to see the eight-foot fence either way. So, but I, I guess, my, my only concern with that, George, is that, that the people own this property. I know you've got an access easement through it.
Right.
Just, just like the Ed Sale, the people that live in Sailor Place, what they've decided to do is, is they've taken that drainage easement that's in their backyard, and they've incorporated, they could've put their fence on the other side of that 15-foot easement. But you see what happened? They selected, they chose to put their fence on the far side of the easement and incorporate that property into their backyard. And they're mowing it, and they're maintaining it, and that's perfectly fine. Well, all we're saying is that, that there's a, there's a pretty high probability that the people in the new subdivision will wanna do the same thing that these folks are doing. That's all I'm trying to say. Now, I hear what you're saying, and, and a part of the problem is that these people that are gonna own these houses are gonna own that property.
Mr. Stifel, can I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think the code doesn't allow the new people to do that.
Okay, and that's new, that, that was just a recent change, and so that changes the dynamic a little bit, and I agree with you.
Okay, so I would like to amend this ordinance or resolution that we would approve, that we move the eight-foot fence over 25 feet, and we put a lockbox on that easement area so people cannot walk behind those two fences.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. George, okay. Do we need to vote on that now, or amendment now? Okay, all in favor of the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Let me, let me just ask a question.
Yes.
You're saying that, who's gonna maintain this road in the future? Because right now, Dr. Bertuzzi has to maintain that property. All these people are gonna agree to maintain the, the free property they're, they're now receiving? I mean, this is an existing construction easement.
So even if they had the eight-foot fence over here, and they can only put a fence over to here, how those individuals will still have to get behind their fence to clean this property?
No, right now, you're saying, the, I think, right now, and I live a block away, there's either no fence on a lot of the properties, or there's like a six-foot chain link fence. And so if a fence is gonna be replaced, the proposal was, they would replace a fence on the property line. If you're moving a fence 25 feet extra, and Sailor people are taking an extra 25 feet of property, they're basically taking Dr. Bertuzzi's property as part of the, and they're taking the construction easement, and they're taking the utility easement.
No.
No, no, no.
No, 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 we're moving.
No.
Their fence will remain, the, the people on Sailor, their fence still remains there. What they're saying is the second, the additional fence behind their fence, be moved 25 feet. Now, from what I understand, is this eight-foot fence was actually a concession made to homeowners on Sailor. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And when that concession was made, the fence was gonna go on, basically adjacent to the existing fence, and if you're.
Actually, I think we did make the agreement to do it at 25 feet, so that they could have that green space, is what we were discussing.
Yeah, but what happens, though, Dixie, and if I, correct me if I'm the attorney here, but I'm Mr. Brady, but if I'm, if I, if I'm understanding this correctly, that adverse possession, if you move a fence after a certain period of time.
10 years.
The fence, you, 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 you don't own that property anymore. So wherever the fence winds up going, if your, if your fence.
And you're taking, you're taking 20, basically 25 feet of their property.
You're giving up 25 feet of your property.
My concern is not where the, where the eight-foot fence is.
That's not how adverse possession works. There's, there's, there's more elements to it than that. One, the other property owner would have to fence that property in and then control it as if it was their own. What we're saying, the Sailor Drive fences will still stay there. The, the eight, what she's suggesting at the secondary fence would be moved here, the Sailor people would not have use and control and ownership of, of the easement area. That would remain Mr. Bertuzzi's responsibility or property. It just wouldn't be fenced in with a double fence. Again, our ordinance doesn't allow any fences to interfere with access to the, to the, the pump area. So there's, adverse possession isn't relative to this, to this issue. I think it's just, in my opinion, if, if the eight-foot fence was a concession to homeowners, I don't, I think that you're a reasonable and prudent person, and I think so is your developer. I don't think your developer wants to build two fences because he wants to spend that extra money. I think that other fence, secondary fence next to the, next to the Sailor Drive properties was a concession, and I think that should remain with the developer. That decision should be, should, should be between the developer and those property owners, if that was a concession.
It'd be, it'd be one fence, one eight-foot fence, it's just a matter of where we're gonna put it, correct?
That's right. The code doesn't allow you to interfere with that easement, so whether you move it.
So it makes sense to go ahead and do that anyway?
So the 25-foot, though, the 25-foot, regardless of where the foot, fence goes, is owned by the person that's going in the Bertuzzi subdivision.
That's right now.
So if you go and you put an eight-foot fence 25-foot away, who's responsible for maintaining that property?
Well, at the moment, the, it's a utility easement, owned by the utility authority, and, and typically, whoever owns the easement maintains it. The power company, or the utility authority, or the city. Now, in cases, you have drainage easements that run through backyards, and people mowing that for the city. But typically, whoever owns the easement is, is maintaining the easement.
But right now, nobody is maintaining it.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that the utilities, the utilities already may be.
There's not a road there right now, though.
No, it's not a road, but, but they, it's possible that they'd be running, in fact, likely that they'd be running box, I mean, bushhogs or something like that, just to make sure that, because they don't want the trees to grow up and interfere, the root systems to interfere with the underground culverts.
Regardless if we have the fence up on the other fence, or if we have it over here,
you're still gonna, if these people decide to build a fence over here, you're still gonna have this 25-foot space. So regardless, somebody's gonna have to take care of it, no matter where you put that eight-foot fence.
And if it doesn't get taken care of, it, it just grows up and it's woods. And that, that would probably make the residents even happier.
My question is this, though, what if someone doesn't want a fence in their backyard, and they want their kids to be able to run wherever in their backyard? They own that property. And I'm not completely opposed to this, but if we were to table this for a week, and you go back and talk to Mr. Bertuzzi and say, hey, do you have a problem? Because technically, this is his property.
That's right.
And I don't think that we should say, okay, you can't have 25-foot of your property. Now, if we need to come through there, we can. And so everybody may not have a fence in their backyard, may not want it, and so they may want that 25 extra foot to do whatever. But originally, the agreement was not to build a structure within 25-foot of that property line, or where their fence is, which is actually 40-foot. And so I sort of have a problem dictating to a property owner, hey, you know what, we're basically gonna take 50, it's, it's almost like eminent domain, we're gonna take 25% of your property, and you can't do anything, do, even go on it, basically, unless you put a gate in your, on the back of your property.
In, in that 25-foot easement, and Billy Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the outfall from the treatment plant. So we're not gonna let, they're not, they can't put, build anything in that. They have to get a permit from, through community development, and it comes through engineering, and we will not give them a permit to build any structure, or more than likely, we won't give them a permit to fence that easement in any way, because there's an outfall that goes through there that has to be accessed by utility authority. So very, it's very unlikely that there's gonna be anything built, unless somebody builds something without getting a permit. Because there's, it's, the, the whole treatment plant outfall goes through that easement. There has to be access. Mr. Tisdale?
I don't understand where everybody got to.
Mr. Tisdale?
Well, it, 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 a couple, a couple things.
Y'all are on the wrong road, I'm telling you.
Mr. Stifel, how many, how many entries to this development will there be from Atkinson?
Say that again, how many?
How many entries or exits to this development, for this phase of the development, will there be from Atkinson?
One from Atkinson, from this phase.
Okay.
There's, there's already, you know, an entrance over there by the, by the clinic there.
Right.
And then there'll be an entrance in between those two, in a phase, in the future phase, a commercial phase.
So then, if I understood correctly, any construction activity, traffic, or whatever, is going to enter off of Pops Ferry Road? Is there anything, again, I'm thinking the timing and the traffic study, and I appreciate the explanation and background. I'm, I'm thinking, is there any way to restrict access from Atkinson until that traffic study is complete? In other words, and if it takes a year or two to, I don't know how long it'll be before you sell the first house out there in that development, let's say it's 18 months.
It would be, it would be substantially more than two years. It, it'll take two years to get the lots on the ground.
Two or two and a half.
It would typically take six, probably another year or two to get the homes on the ground. So we're talking really three-plus years before you start realizing, feeling traffic.
Okay. That's all, thank, thank you.
I would like to make one, one more while I'm here, but what's one more comment about the fence? And, and I'm not trying to be difficult here, usually I'm not. But, you know, the, the whole intent was to provide the eight-foot fence for privacy purposes, and, and what's happening now is you got this 25-foot easement that's, that we're trying to figure out which side of that easement to put the fence on. Well, the, the, the developer is simply wanting to do on his property what, what the homeowners and the developer did, same thing the developer did on Sailor Place. And that's what, and that's what all developers do.
But it was already said that if these residents want to build a fence, they cannot build it all the way back to your eight-foot fence. They have to build, so it doesn't matter, they're not gonna be able to do that.
But here's the difference, and, and just, just to make it a point, that, that just clears up for everybody, that if you put the eight-foot fence on the back of the Sailor lots, you still get the, everybody gets their eight-foot fence that they're looking for, that's what we agreed to, that's what my client agreed to. If, if folks on the, the new subdivision side don't want a fence, then they get to enjoy 25 more feet of backyard for their dogs or whatever. You see what I'm saying? Just like the Sailor Place residents are doing. But if you're, if you back that fence up eight feet, then you're not giving the, the same, the same privilege that the Sailor Place residents are enjoying now. They're just being treated differently. And that's fine. If that's, if that's the, the desire of the council, then, then we'll have to live with that. But it's just not, it doesn't seem to be reasonable or fair.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Deming, go ahead.
Thank you.
Mr. Stifel, one, one last question, I'm sorry. Being that the property is owned by the Bertuzzis, the green space that we're talking about, and that the fence was a concession made by the developer to the homeowners, would it be fair to suggest that the developer and the homeowners can, or cannot decide to put that eight-foot fence behind their own individual properties? Or is this gonna be one contiguous fence that has to be unified from one end to the other?
Well, it could be handled on a lot-by-lot basis, and I guess the reason why I'm pushing back on this a little bit, and is because essentially what you're doing is your, the fence is gonna wind up being very, very close to the houses on the Bertuzzi side. You know, we were trying to give these guys a little bit more backyard.
Well, Mr. Stiefel, to limit your narration, I am not referring to putting a fence anywhere else. This is my question specifically to the fence that would be adjacent, or excuse me, adjacent to the Sailor Drive fences.
And...
What was your question again?
Whether it would be, whether this had to be one contiguous fence from the first lot to the last, or if it could be done on an individual basis per homeowner on Sailor.
Well, as far as we're concerned, we will do whatever the residents want, but, you know, what I, we envisioned, and it was our understanding, that the fence would be a continuous fence, essentially to buffer all the residents of Sailor Place all the way down to the end of the subdivision. If some of the Sailor Place residents don't want the fence there, you know, we're okay with that. But it just seems like it'd be consistent and neat to have it go all the way down. You know, we did something similar to this on Bellawood, put an eight-foot fence up there, and we'll mark it.
And I understand that. I think that we see that there are some homeowners on Sailor, that while it was made as a concession to certain homeowners, that group probably was not homogeneous in the sense that all the people wanted the same thing.
Yeah, you know, we don't mind, you know, it seems like it would look horrible if you had, if you had, you know, gaps in a fence. It seems like it probably ought to be all the way, or no way, but there's some folks, like they said, that are not, they don't have fences at all, and they probably don't want fences there, but...
Right, and when you say it looks horrible, we all know the old adage of what an opinion is and what it smells like. So I would just, I would suggest that if this was a concession for the individual homeowners, then I would talk to the individual homeowners and find some compromise there. I think there are a lot of people that would be willing to work with you to resolve that.
Well, and if y'all want to amend the motion to that effect, where we'll build the eight-foot fence wherever the adjacent neighbors want the eight-foot fence, we're okay with that.
Mr. Guines?
Yeah, I think the problem you're gonna have when you start talking to individual homeowners, that homes tend to change hands. So if homes tend to change hands, you know, you made a deal with one and not the other. So, that's gonna complicate matters. I think we just need to leave it where it's at, and that way, we know we have what we, exactly what we have. If we get to jerking the fence back and forth, back and forth, right now, I don't know where the fence is at, so...
And that's okay.
I think we just need to call for the question.
Go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
To the folks who would know, I don't know. I want to go back to this widening of Atkinson Road. I don't know how many parcels that would be. It'd be a lot. I don't know what the cost would be. I mean, the city would bear the expense exclusively, all of that expense, correct? Or would, you know, if there's an MDA grant available, or for something like that, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I think my question is, how long would it take to widen? If we started today and everything was in place, how long would it take to acquire the property and widen Atkinson Road? Your best guess?
On his side, we're talking about for the turning lane, if he's given the property, I mean, there are telephone poles there, and so that's gonna...
I'm talking about the rest of Atkinson Road. If nothing else, from Jim Money West to Pops Ferry, how long do you think? Two years?
No, no idea.
No idea, okay. All right, thanks.
Go ahead.
Jerry, does this, does anything that we're passing today compel them to build the fence in any location?
I'm sorry.
Does this compel them to build the fence? And if it does, could we amend it to where the fence, it could be a decision made at an individual basis per Sailor Drive lot?
You can do that, but one of the concerns I have about having a fence here, and no fence here, and a fence here, and no fence here, is that the strength in a fence is the distance, and all the fences being attached. So, could you do that? Yes. Could you put it up? Yes.
Well, let me respond to that real quick, because what that, when Mr. Stiefel spoke, he said, most of the properties, if not all. And then he discussed that some property owners may not want that fence. So then, on the other side, you still, at that point, may have a fence, and then not a fence, and then a fence, and then not a fence, and then a fence, and then a fence. So that's theoretical. So, what I would rather do, instead of talk theoretical or hypotheticals, I would like to just allow that to be a decision between the developer and the homeowners on Sailor Drive. Is that possible?
Yes, that is possible.
Would I need to amend this ordinance to do so?
Yes, you could do that.
Well... So I will move to...
We're gonna have to be clear on that, then.
We already have an amendment.
Real quick question.
Already have an amendment.
Would that confuse the easement?
Are we still discussing the amendment?
No.
Don't think that would confuse the easement.
That would not compromise the easement, no.
Does that mean we're gonna have some people build the fence on the property line, and then some are gonna build it over here off the easement? I mean, we need to be more...
So it won't be uniform?
Wait, is that what you're suggesting?
If we're talking about the fence that backs up to the lots that face Sailor, and we're talking about having a fence behind this house and no fence behind this one, then that's something that could be negotiated between the developer and the Sailor Avenue residents on that side. If we're talking about putting fences across the access easement to get back into this treatment plant back there, that's, the ordinance does not allow that. It doesn't allow fences to come across there. And the purpose for that is to help the city not have to bear the expense. If we ever have to go in to maintain an easement, or the county has to go in to maintain an easement, and you have to remove a structure or a fence, then we have to take that down at our cost, and then we have to make sure that it goes back up after we get through. So the provision was put in the ordinance to prevent people from putting accessory structures on an easement. You know, we've got this situation in Mr. Lawrence's ward, like up there north of Division Street, where over the years, there were alleys in there, and people came in, put fences and sheds all the way down. And now, we have some utilities in there that are very difficult to get to, because we can't get through those. So the ordinance was put in there to benefit, the section was put in there to benefit the city, so that we wouldn't have to absorb those costs of having to remove multiple fences to get in and service our lines or our easements.
Gotcha. All right, thank you, Mr. Stiefel.
Let me be clear, the amendment that's on the table is to compel the developer to build a fence 25 feet behind the fences at the end of the properties on Sailor Drive? That's what we're, is that the amendment that's on the table?
That was, yeah.
So we are forcing developers to essentially give up 25 feet of their property?
Well, not necessarily. They can, there's nothing that prevents them from having a gate in the back of their yard, where they can still access that easement area back there. So, it's not totally closing it off to them, but they could still have access into it.
But my kids couldn't throw a football through that fence.
All right, perhaps we should just table this, and he can speak to the developer, and that way, we're not taking any property, it's up to him.
So moved.
Thank you. If I remove my first...
We got the amendment first.
I withdraw my motion. And Tisdale withdraws his second, and now we're doing a table.
Second. He moved it, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor of tabling?
For how long? For how long, a week?
A week.
Till next week?
Is that fine?
That work for you?
All right, one week. All in favor? What do we have here, five, six, one? Like, Guines is against, so six, one?
Wanted to be against it.
Everybody except for Guines.
Tisdale voted for it, right?
Six, one to table till next week.
What the hell?
Guines against.
All right, moving on.
What was the vote?
Six, one. Guines against.
Okay.
Resolution appointing Randy Behrs to the Biloxi... Resolution appointing Randy Behrs to the Biloxi Architectural and Historical Review Commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Glavine?
Is Mr. Behrs here?
No.
Nope, I don't have it, he's good appointment, I think everybody will support him, he'll do a good job.
Mr. Tisdale?
I'll agree.
Hey Kenny, he don't know who's appointed.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote? Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, can, is F, is that for the whole project, or just for a portion of the project, or what? And is that money that's coming out of the bond money?
F as in Frank? F as in Frank.
Or Fofo?
That's bond money, that's just, that's same capital project, that's just...
All right, that's the only question I have.
Technical stuff they gotta do to test, some testing.
All right, that's all I have.
I have none.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Mr. Dimming?
Nothing.
Mr. Guines?
Hi.
Mr. Lawrence?
Kenneth McEwen, you appoint him to the board, he gonna bring force back to us? On A.
Right, that's...
On a sir.
The bank has to have somebody designated by the city that they can talk to about the, how to use that fund, decisions on that fund. We just had to give them a name, who's the point of contact. So we, head of accounting, seems like the logical guy to talk to the bank about...
But you keep it updated.
...rates and so forth.
All right, on 30,000 extension, on D, the extension and time, money, you said 30,000 extension money?
That's time and money, and basically, it's because we added $600,000 to that project to extend it further into Keesler. So, the company doing the project administration is gonna be doing it longer, and as a percentage of that work, they, we pay them a little more. So, the road was originally not gonna go all the way to Larcher, which is the main drag of Keesler. Now, it goes all the way to Larcher, so they're extending it further, so that extends the time and $600,000 more, again, MDA money.
That's right. All right. And on G and H, it just says waterways, is that, could that be Keegan's bayou? Which needs to be dredged? G and H.
Okay, G and H, let's talk about sedimentation. First of all, on H, the change order on the, notice it says, on the basis of unit prices with J E Borries, that's adding additional quantity to the dredging contract with Borries at the same rates. So it's not a rate change, it's actually a quantity change at the existing rates. We're adding some more sedimentation work, more dredging work at two of the sites. In some cases, they get into the sites, and there's, when they go to measure, there's more sediment that needs to be taken than they thought. So, in every case, they always measure before they start, and measure after they're done, so they could prove how much has been taken. In the case of two of the sites, they need it, they need more sediment, they're gonna be moving more sediment than was originally bid.
Okay, so you're not expanding the site, you're just finishing two sites, yeah?
Just probably going deeper. The other one, G, and I've got, we've got Seymour Engineering here, if you want some more detail. My note says to me, I'm supposed to say, if, if, you know, any road will get you there if you don't know where you're going. We really don't know where we're going on dredging, because we're kinda doing it a year at a time, and it was suggested to us that we ought to have a master dredging plan that looked out 10 years, and so that we could plan how much dredging and sedimentation removal that we had to do. So this is to create a master dredging plan going out many years. Right now, we're, as I say, we're doing it like a year at a time, we go get a little bit of money, we do a little bit of dredging, do a little bit of permitting, then next year, we go try and figure out where else to go next, and sometimes, it's just who's screaming the loudest, and so forth. So this gives us an actual master plan where we're gonna dredge over the next, you know, decade.
Okay, and the next one is the K.
I'm gonna do Seymour.
On that. Do we, Mike, Mike, do we go through the natural selection plan when we do it, the procurement process? Are we utilizing that?
Well, no, and I don't think we have to.
Okay.
It's a professional services. In this case, Seymour is doing all our dredging work today. And what we try and do, Councilman, is we try and, each of these firms has specialties that have done workforce, and Seymour has done a lot of the dredging work and a lot of the maritime stuff, so we've kinda stick with them, not to try and unload, you know, load up on somebody. Pickering, as you know, did some great workforce on Howard Avenue, and we're looking for some more work for them to do. BMA was also the company that designed the infrastructure work for the Keesler Gate area, so we gave them the Keesler Gate area, because they were already working there. So we try and, you know, spread the work around to Biloxi area of companies. In this case, we didn't, we didn't do a source selection.
Okay, thank you. Great job.
And on this K, they said we found the mistakes in the, we deal with $106,000, $106,000, you found a $6,000 mistake. How is this a mistake? How, y'all picked this up?
Rachel, Rachel, speak to that on the script there.
Okay.
Something put on the third floor, that was for our authorization, it was a $600 error. It was an error, it's not on the first, but it is on the second. That's $600, three, four, time, time, time again. We found it this time, we're trying to amend it after we prove our fourth amendment.
So you took it out, pretty much?
Yes, to get us to the right amount, so everything about...
Correct today. And the addition of $36,000 was for what? I think with $36,500.
I agree with that. Now, that's to allow, you survey this area, looking to have identified the addition of the... Perhaps less common error, looking to get through areas of all thousands of... All less valid.
So that cost the $36,000 years ago. Almost like that easement, it costs a bunch of money here. Just checking. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous vote, with any exceptions? F for Barrett. Any other? All right, moving on to code enforcement?
First item on the agenda, I'm a Tyler and Hanson, 627 Comster Cop Street. I would ask for 30 days on this. Property has been acquired by a very reputable contractor, that has the capacity to repair this house, so I'll ask for 30 days to allow them to complete...
Make that motion.
All right, I got a motion by Dimming, and second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? 30-day extension? All in favor, I mean, all unanimous vote, except Dimming's, I mean, Barrett is out of the room.
Item B, Ethel J Murdoch, 329 Pops Ferry Road, this property is still in violation.
Why is it in violation?
That's not one of these ID-10-T errors, is it?
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Ethel J Murdoch at 329 Pops Ferry Road?
Okay, that house was the one on Cop Street, the one that you showed, so we're going to the next one, which is Ethel Murdoch's.
Sorry.
I've seen that on my ward.
The house is vacant, the lot's overgrown, there's dilapidated shit in the backyard, that's what's being addressed on the agenda today.
What is it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, what's being addressed?
The growth in the back, the dilapidated shit in the rear door.
All right, is Ethel here to speak on behalf of her property?
If not, case is closed. If not, case is closed.
Item C on the agenda, Christopher K. Swettman, 515 Howard Avenue, this property's
Is Christopher K. Swettman at 515 Howard Avenue here to speak on behalf of his property? If not, case is closed. Do I have a motion on the routine agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines.